Before we start, I want to make a couple of things. First of all, it's our distinguished accountant, birthday today, financial director, Mr. Jerry Milner, happy birthday my man. Appreciate it. Also, through the heavy heart tonight that we acknowledge the passing of our former consulate and mayor Daniel, Dr. Daniel Cubin, may he rest in peace. He was also currently retired Colonel in United States Army, and our flag will fly as half-bashed tomorrow and Wednesday in honor of his service. And Chief Will Ryan, would you tell citizens what's going to happen tomorrow in honor of Colonel Cubin?
Tomorrow, we will do a brief escort from the funeral home here in Westlake to Hickson's on Ryan Street. I believe we're going to make several passes by the golf course, by the schools, and before we leave Westlake, we're going to make a pass by the here City Hall. Our department will have the flag draped, so we will also have the flag before leaving Westlake.
Right. The wanted to pass, the family wanted to pass by the places that were important, front of City Hall. He was assistant president of Arnett, principal of Westwood, principal of Western Heights, and counselor at Westlake High School. So he left quietly, he had quite a bit of service for the city of Westlake, but anyhow, may he rest in peace.
What time tomorrow?
One o'clock.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead with the pledge of pledges and the dedication of this.
You recite the pledge. Pledge of pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we would, don't mind having a moment of silence before we say the Lord prayer in reference to our past veteran friend, our past educational friend, and also an administration friend for many years in our city, Mr. Dan Cubin. So if we could have a moment of silence for him at this time. We will say the Lord prayer after. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily prayer, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to confession, but deliver us from evil. The line is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever, and the pressure standing with judicious. Amen.
All right, we'll call roll. Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Cryer?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Mrs. Hoffpower?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Okay. So first, we have citizens in the audience, the high school students were not able to make it tonight, so we'll bring them back next month. David DuBlessin, victim advocate program.
Good evening. I've had the opportunity to talk to you all a couple of times before. Once when we started this program, and I've given you an update since then, and just wanted to come tonight and update you on where the program stood as a whole. In 2016, Family and Youth Counseling Agency, who I worked for, started a victim advocate program at three major or three of the larger police departments in southwest Louisiana. And our goal was to improve services to victims, free detectives up to do police work, and improve the relationships between police departments and the communities they serve. Later that year, we were able to identify some additional funding. We approached some other departments about expanding our services to them. Chief Will Ryan was one of the folks we talked to, and he welcomed us with open arms. Since January of 2017, we've had a victim advocate here. Thankfully, you don't have enough crime for a full-time victim advocate, that's a good thing. But we have one that kind of covers my smaller departments and some domestic violence crimes with the Capshaw Parish Sheriff's Office. So she's here as needed and taking care of your victims. Just to give you an idea of what we've done since the program has started, and these numbers are through September 30th of 2017, we worked with 72 victims. Not all of those are victims of crime here in Westlake. One of the advantages, I guess, being in a small community, you know everybody, and Chief Will Ryan has had us work with a couple of Westlake citizens who are actually victims of crimes and other little caps, just to be able to help them and provide the services that we do for your victims that are here in the community. Just to give you an idea, the biggest number we've worked with have been domestic violence victims, but we've also, and the second highest number is child sexual abuse. Thirty-four domestic violence victims, 16 victims of child sexual abuse. We've also worked with victims of adult physical assault, sexual assault, survivors of homicide, and the list goes on. During that time, we provided 705 services for those victims of crime. Now, a service may be as simple as a phone call to say, hey, Mr. DuBlessin, just to remind you, you've got a court date tomorrow, and I'll be there with you, and we'll see you there. Or it may be spending the entire day in court with the victim, just kind of supporting them, being there with them, walking them through the process. That's it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I would say this is a great example of a public-private partnership across the city of Westlake nothing. Basically, Chief makes sure that my victim advocate has a desk to sit at, a phone line, and an internet connection. We take care of everything else, the salaries, the computers, the equipment, anything they need, we provide. So it's been a great partnership. It's made a difference in your community. We're thankful to Chief and his detectives for welcoming us and letting us there, to you as well. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you. Otherwise, we appreciate the opportunity for working with you for a continued.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, and we appreciate, I know you have a good man working with you, Chief Will Ryan, he does a good job for us, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, next we have Calvin Thibodeau and Erica Martin with Entergy.
Thank you all for giving the opportunity to address the city council. It's been my honor to serve the city council over the last year. Things are kind of changing how we organize today. Erica Martin is new to our group. She will be handling the city of Westlake going forward as the account manager. I've also got Lorena Caesar in the group. She's also the account manager for governmental. Both Erica and herself will support Westlake. She'll back up Erica when we go through this. But also, not to take away from this, I wanted to give an opportunity for Erica to go over some of the things that our smart app does on our phone. There's an opportunity for residents, city council members, the general public, to turn on streetlights. If you have a security light on your account, you can also turn that on. You can create a ticket to get it restored. And at the end of the day, we want to see all the streetlights working, but we need the community's involvement to better do that. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Erica, and...
Okay. So, we have the My Energy app, and that is available on both the Apple and Android platforms for your smartphones. We're going to go to the next slide. So this is what it looks like once you get everything set up inside of your app. You can use it to manage your personal count. Once you get in there, you select outage, and you can select report a streetlight out, and this will show you what it looks like. I think this is actually a screenshot from the screen of Calvin's phone.
Let me ask you a question. How many people are currently energy customers and are current using the app? Great. Glad to see that. If you're not familiar with the app, be glad to share with anybody how to get the app, how to set it up. It does a number of things, trying to make business a lot easier. The app's one way. I use, that's probably the only thing I use. I can look at my bill amongst other things. So it's just a great app. So...
Yep, you're good. Okay, so if you see the screenshot up there, you can see where it's giving him a notice. You can see the outage stuff on the right side where it indicates that his power's on, he does not have an outage. You can report your power out and see the outage map, and if you look right below that, it says, "Report a streetlight out." You can go to the next slide. Okay. So it's GPS enabled, so wherever you're at, if you're driving, if you're at your house and you open it up to report a streetlight, it's going to show you the streets and the streetlights that are around you. It tracks your route to travel. Calvin has traveled and tested it out several times. So if you're sitting in your house and you've got a streetlight out on your street, you open it up, you click on the streetlight on the map, and you can select the issue. If it's out, one of some of the other issues.
So this thing will actually track you. Right here is our office down near the Ryan Street. I'm actually sitting in my office, took a screenshot of that. But it'll actually track you, you just got to slow down if you get to the lights out, give it a second to catch up, but once you get to that light, it's a, as you stated, it's just a quick click on that button, on any one of the icons that you're next to. And then I'm going to let her continue from there, but it's user-friendly. Once you use it a couple of times, I did like, I would say 30 lights in about 15 minutes the other morning. Traffic wasn't really leveling out, and I just pulled up, started turning lights, and I followed it through. Unique thing, it's actually going to tie it to your account. So if you ever come up and say, "I have turned in these lights," our first question is going to be, "Okay, you use the app? What is your account number?" Or we'll pull it up, and then I can actually see all the work orders on that account. So maybe not, so I could actually look and see what I'd done, and then also see that it was completed.
So once you select your streetlight issue, if there's any additional comments you need to make, you have the option to do that, and just click submit. And you can use the little arrow to back out and go back to your old screen, and you can go to the next slide and show you what it looks like. So, once you're in there and you've reported your outages, you can select my reported light outages, and it's actually going to show you what are outages that you have reported. So this is another screenshot of some outages that Calvin did, and it ties them to your account.
I'm going to interrupt you because I left one shot off this. I put this together, and I apologize, but in between there, there's actually a number that comes across, a little bit number. It gives you an image. Before you exhale that little number, take a snippet of that. You can contact Energy and ask them, that is your actual request. The nice thing about this, it is created that moment. It goes to our click, we're not waiting for anybody to create the lighting order, it's created then, and it's driving through our work groups.
So you can see in this list of outages that Calvin reported, it shows the date that he reported them. It gives them, is that the numbers that it ties to it?
It does, but I don't really use that. The number that come up before there is an actual ticket number. And if you ever called in and said, "Hey, I've got a ticket, something such, want to check on it," they can pull it and tell you exactly what you have.
So you can go to the next slide. Okay. So if you want to open each case, it actually shows you the status of what you've reported. So on the left side, you have each of the streetlights that have been reported. On the right, you can see a timeline of what type of outage it is, when it was created, and the commit date that's been given to fix that outage. All right, we go to the next slide. And that's it on how to use the app to report streetlight outages. If y'all have any questions, we'll have to...
Are they going to apply it to sweepstakes?
No, it's actually, this is actually a great tool to use, because the normal process, we had a couple of processes, and I call it, was to call you. I don't recommend that. We had a lighting order, an energy email that you could send in, and a lot of the city council people would do that. And that actually has to go to a person to create that order. So it's a little bit of time delay in that, to go to that person. This actual app instantly creates that ticket for us, and bypasses a person having to create it, and it's just a whole lot faster response time, so.
So it only applies to people that have Entergy?
No. It actually does not. You can sign in as a guest, and say you work in Lake Charles or in an energy service area. On the first screen, when you open the app, it says, "Continue as guest." If you click that, you can still view outages in the area and report outages in the area.
So, I mean, the main thing is, we want to get these lights turned in. These cities and municipalities are paying for these lights, but we want to get them working, we want it light up. Look, we're all coming back from two hurricanes and a number of things that we're all rebuilding. So we want to see all these lights working. This is just one key feature to get lights going. And note, East Davis, they have some of the different people that are actually going out, they were testing it out there, turning in a bunch of lights, where they just recently went through out. So, but it's a very useful tool, and I highly recommend using it. If you play around on it, there's a lot of other things that tool will do, and it's quite unique.
Y'all have any other questions?
So we're not to call Calvin anymore? We've got to call you?
Unfortunately, yes.
Sorry. Yeah, she is the account manager for the city of Westlake. And then what we're doing, we back each other. So Lorena's actually going to back up Erica. I'm got to, I'm more or less of what we call CNI accounts versus government accounts. We've actually done a little bit of separation, just to explain a little bit. I'm handling the CNI accounts, which is like your hospitals, casinos, light industrials. Erica's going to be working governmental along with Lorena. They back each other. If it gets to be, which it could, if they're both out, we're going to back each other. So it's just more commitment from Energy to make sure the city of Westlake gets what they need. So you're going to send me the contacts?
That's what I was going to ask you. Can you email it off to us, for your information?
Yes.
And I have a few copies of the presentation, and if anybody has any questions or needs help finding it in the app, or I can show you when the meeting's done, just come let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, man.
All right. Need a motion and a second to approve or disapprove the consent calendar?
Motion by Mr. Cryer, and second by Mr. Bergeron. All in favor? unanimous?
No bid items, discussion items. Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove issuing a beer and liquor license to Seven Seven Enterprises LLC located at 100 Westlake Avenue. That'll be inside Harshu Casino, and be upon state approval.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Cryer. All in favor? unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove introducing ordinance 1011, and ordinance amending ordinance 994 to expand the Economic Development District, EDD, known as Westlake Opportunity Zone District, state of Louisiana, to include the Harshu Casino property and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, and second by Mr. Cryer. All in favor? unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove holding a public hearing on the condemnation and demolition of 1021 Live Oak Street.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron for approve. Second by Mr. Cryer. All in favor? approved?
Time is five forty-seven. Do we have any public comments for the demolition and condemnation of 1021 Live Oak Street? Anyone have anything to discuss on 1021 Live Oak Street? Anyone want to discuss 1021 Live Oak Street condemnation and demolition? Any known publicists? Closed. All right. Next item, need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove introducing ordinance 1009, an ordinance ordering the condemnation and demolition of the structure located at 1021 Live Oak Street, Westlake, Louisiana, and authorizing the mayor to execute an affidavit setting forth the cost of demolition for recordation in the mortgage records of Capshaw Parish, Louisiana.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bergeron. All in favor? Approved.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove introducing ordinance 1010, an ordinance abandoning a certain portion of Green Road Street from Continental Boulevard to Tillman Street, which is located in the corporate limits of the city of Westlake.
Can I do have a question before we vote on that?
Motion somebody? Mr. Cryer? Second by Mr. Cryer, and seconded by somebody. Brown seconded, all in favor? You want us to discuss that?
Yeah, you discussed it before.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick question. If we do abandon that street, which I don't see any issue with, do, are we, do we need to barricade that street off, or will the church have to barricade that portion of the street off? How does that work?
So, no one is familiar, they're talking about the street that's right behind the old Pentecostal Church, and right there behind the airways. It's that little strip right there. Pentecostal Church is asking for that to be able to expand back there, because they'll be going back and forth across the road, so they want to have access to that road for safety for the kids.
I don't think they're going to barricade, they're going to build a building, and that's what they wanted for, they want to stop having to worry about kids if they get hurt.
Right, but how do you prevent the traffic from traveling down the street?
Well, I understand they're going to build it.
Is that something our responsibility, or something that they would be pumping for?
Well, that's going to be theirs. That's their, that's going to be theirs.
I'll just give you an instance, if they want to.
Yeah, the problem, they can barricade it, they won't do it. What our, what we're fixing to do is name that little street for Mr. Caraway. Okay, you know that.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so now we need to vote.
All right. Mr. Cryer, motion and a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor? unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove adopting ordinance 984, an ordinance authorizing the name of Green Road Street from McKinley Street to Continental Boulevard located in the city limits of Westlake to be amended to change to Caraway Street and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron?
Approved.
Approved. Second by Mr. Cryer. All in favor? unanimous? Good, then we can proceed and get them signed.
And just to remind everybody, that was introduced back in August of 2020. I'm getting back to normal, okay. Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove resolution 3630, a resolution authorizing Daniel W. Rocka interamericano city of Westlake, Louisiana, to execute a right-of-way agreement with Entergy, Louisiana LLC, and to execute any and all documents in connection therewith.
Need a motion. Motion by Mr. Hayes. Second by Mr. Brown. All in favor? unanimous? Want to tell them what that is? Quick to tell them it's about, go ahead.
It's a right-of-way agreement. They're renewing all of their right-of-ways through town, and this is, we did one a few months ago, and this is just the second one.
Some probably citizens have had something happen, I'm one of them, that came back and changed the right-of-way. Paid a point for it. Last time that it was eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred or something, so it's a right-of-way for them to come through Golf City.
Are you crazy?
Yeah? I ain't getting you none.
They'll pay, they'll pay us.
It's just cash, Jack. Okay. unanimous? I'm sorry, I asked you to tell them. Go ahead.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove resolution 3631, a resolution authorizing Daniel W. Rocka interamericano city of Westlake, Louisiana, to execute and approve change order number four for John Stein Road from Murdo Springs to Foster, and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron, second by Mr. Hoff, approved by Mrs. Hoffauer, second. All in favor? unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove adopting ordinance 1006, an ordinance placing a moratorium on manufactured homes in the area between Sampson Street East of the Capshaw River and Sulphur Avenue South to Alabamere Boulevard.
Motion by Mr. Brown, or second by Mr. Bergeron. All in favor? unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove the buyout of the temporary clubhouse from Vesta Modular. I believe Mr. Milner has info on that.
Yes, we negotiated, we accepted, we made an offer to buy out forty-seven thousand. We started at sixty-six thousand, and that was really our replacement cost estimate by insurance company was forty-six. And we had, under the lease, we had to, you know, repair it and then haul it to where they, their, whether they wanted to sell it to. So I think this is the most cost-effective way for us to buy it and then, you know, eventually remove it from its present location.
Need a motion?
So Jerry, so basically what you're saying is, we got forty-six thousand from the insurance?
We got thirty-six from the insurance, but we were going to have to repair it, and then we were going to have to move it.
Right.
And so the costs of doing that would exceed, you know, the difference of ten thousand, well, the eleven thousand we were paid, because we had to, you know, so I made an offer of forty-seven, but that was first offer thirty-six, and then we, you know, gradually went back and forth. And I thought it was pretty close to replacement cost, which probably would need a cost, it would cost us to get it back to where it would need to be back up to code, and then we'd have to move it after that, so additional cost, we thought it would be in excess of the forty-seven thousand, so I thought that would be the best deal to go ahead and, you know, agree to in forty-seven thousand dollars.
We'd have to have it moved back to Florida, right? So that'd been a major, that'd been a major cost for the city, for us to have to pay to have it haul it back to Florida. I mean, just to move portable buildings around the city from the school board issue, we'd pay close to ten thousand just to move them right here in town. So you can imagine what it would cost to go all the way, the police escort all the way to Florida.
He estimated twenty-one thousand.
Need a motion, please. Mrs. Hoffauer to approve. Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you all.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove resolution 3632, a resolution setting the speed limit for West Trace community for all streets with the exception of National Drive, Dudley Dixon Drive, and Felton Drive to fifteen miles per hour.
Need a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Bergeron. All in favor? unanimous?
Can Maggie speak on that?
Sandra.
Am I Sandra?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Come on up here. You want it to be twenty-five miles an hour?
Just on Augusta Way. Uh, I'm John Walker, live in National Golf Course, Louisiana, subdivision of their Augusta side. I've lived there for six years. Augusta Way has been twenty-five miles an hour for thirteen years, and just because the residents of Jubilee and Pinehurst are having the problem with the speeders because the houses are so close together, and I completely agree with that. I'm on the real estate board. I don't think Augusta Way should have to fall into that same gap, because this kind of sits like Pelican does. It's a throwaway through to another road. It's not an isolated road. So like, you know why Augusta Way wasn't included on the, you know, like Dudley Dixon Drive, National Drive, and Pelican Drive? Why it wasn't set at twenty-five also?
We had people on Augusta Way asking for it, because the traffic that flows through there with their kids outside, they're worried their kids are going to get hit up there.
I've yet to, as a real estate board, we've yet to hear that concern from there. We've only heard it down Reserve Drive, Fenton Road, and stuff like that. So that's why I'm kind of curious why Augusta Way's put in that. So if I get, so since a couple of residents can change the speed limit for the whole golf course, basically, if I get a petition, then can we put Augusta Way back to twenty-five?
Have a look at it.
I'm just asking, because, I mean, it doesn't make any sense why that one's going down to fifteen, and it's been that way for thirteen years. We only had a slight problem there for a little bit with John Stott's clothes during that construction period.
I would do that. So, you could bring that back to us and recreate that. Chris, do you, what do you hear? I mean, you'd be the best.
Yeah, we really made many complaints of John Stott's moving back up on that particular, but on Jubilee, Fenton Road, that's the, we most concerned.
And I sincerely feel their problem, because the cars are parked on the road there. If a kid were to drop a ball and somebody going through there at twenty-five, they have no time to stop. We're spaced out. There's plenty of room to see if somebody's coming. It's not the same situation. I think they're too different. It's a reaction for Augusta, and it doesn't make any sense.
I think we'll all look at it, I mean, reasonably.
If he wants to spend time reaching out to the people in his neighborhood, do we want to exempt that decision on for that particular road until he has time to present us with something instead of approving the change and then possibly signs getting put up? That's up to you guys. We like it is, and then comes back with a petition, and we'll get it again.
Does that work?
So you're saying leave that at twenty-five at the time?
No.
Well, you come back with petition, but again, that's all we can do.
Next time, need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove going into executive session with Chief Chris Willrock for a personnel matter.
Motion by Mr. Hayes. Second by Mr. Brown. All in favor? unanimous?
Five fifty-nine.
Could I just tell the kids what they have to go in, come out, and go back in? I have to have a face.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. It's nice.
Yeah.
Where is she?
Hello.
Hey, I'm Rita.
I'm Natalie McFunden.
What's your name?
Natalie McFunden.
I've just recently read about, uh, I guess it, is it all online?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have plans to plan at some point or everything's going online anyway?
Everything's going online and it's really up to Jubilee if they wanna do something. It's, it's a fellowship. So the cohort ends in December and they'll start another, another cohort.
Damn, I don't think I'm doing a good enough job reporting on these city council meetings.
I never got that impression. It's nice to meet you.
In the media too. What do you think about Storyville Productions? Have you ever heard of that company? They had a call from them today trying to get access to the LNG summit. Are you guys gonna cover that? Have you got your passes?
I don't, I'm not sure about that.
Are you from like Charles or like? Can I double dip? Y'all get paid? Can I cover?
That's a good question.
Find out more.
I'll find out. Do you have a card?
I can bring one in.
Okay.
Is Paul Shugger good?
Paul Shugger is a great guy.
I'll get that card.
Yeah.
Need a motion and a second to go back into regular session?
Motion by Mr. Brown. Second by Miss Halfar. Time?
Six oh three.
Six oh three. All in favor? unanimous.
Johnny didn't take any action?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended action by the chief.
Motion by Mr. Badgeron. Second by Mr. Crower. Recommend the action by the chief is unanimous.
All right, need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove going into executive session regarding the city of Westlake, National Golf Club in Louisiana Inc., Westlake Volunteer Fire Department, Westlake Fire Department versus Republic Fire and Casualty Insurance Company, National Union Fire Insurance Company in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and Star Surplus Insurance Company, Fourteenth JDC, Court Number Two Zero Two Two Dash Four Zero Four Four H.
Need a motion. Motion by Mr. Brown.
Go into executive session.
Second by Miss Halfar. All in favor? unanimous.
Do you have a card? You seem more professional than prepared. Name one more time, I'm gonna ride it.
Sorry, can I? I don't even know if I have a ten actually.
We ask about that all the time. I think, I think they've voted on it too, but they still try to wrap their head around what we got.
She's small, man.
I'll tell you right now, I'm gonna love every minute. Cause I'm gonna partake in all this voting and say, go home and ask daddy. But yeah, she's, they just took her, just a regular notice. And came, the second notice, the public care. So in all the pictures, in all the pictures, she's like screaming bloody burger.
It's the people who deceased and it has been adjudicated. The people who are, the company who bought it, they're out of the rest. And, uh, but for some reason they did not pay the taxes from last year. So I believe they realized the damage that they had and it's taken, I'm washing my hands of it. But they still, even though it's adjudicated and we'll have to deal with it until somebody else buys it. They still have to follow procedure because it's a long period of time that they could redeem and pay for it. Yes, they get stolen at times, they're forgetting the taxes and getting it back. So they still have to follow. Why are you changing that? Either way, it was, uh... Yes, that right away. No, it, it affects. So it's really just gonna affect the street signs. Well, I do think we're not being the right-of-way as a person, so we still have to get new right-of-way. And if they can't buy the right-of-way from us, you know, they'll have to pay for that. Yeah, yeah, cause they can talk about it right after the storm. I remember the conversation even Bob was out there doing his last Facebook thing with me. And they discussed his clothes in that section of the road.
Motion, go back into regular session. Motion. Miss Halfar. Mr. Brown, second. All in favor? unanimous. Okay. We go back into regular session. We have a motion, let's go.
Now, we're back, we're back in the regular session. Uh, now that we need to.
So you need somebody to make approval of what we just got through talking about. Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mr. Crower, accepted. Standing to the executive session. Uh, Mr. Hayes, second. All in favor? unanimous.
Next item, update our model city projects.
Okay.
Byron.
Mr. Rocker. Mr. Rocker.
Hurry up and see. We're gonna go through this report here. So as far as projects we had under construction, they are, a lot of them are starting to wrap up. Um, John Stein, that one's being closed out. Um, a substantial, or final inspection was conducted and a punch list was created and those items on that punch list are actively being addressed. So, uh, closing out with DOTD takes a little longer just because of their policies and procedures. Um, Foster Lane and Jones Street Sanitary Sewer Extension, uh, that project is complete as well. And the recommendation for final pavement and approval of the rectification change article is transferred to you, which I think y'all addressed tonight as well. Uh, the hole fourteen drainage improvements, which is no longer hole fourteen, it's now hole six, but that's where the project was built.
Hole five.
That project is under construction.
Correction, hole five.
Oh, it's five now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteen minus nine is five.
All right, so now it is hole five. Um, but that project is under construction. We're waiting when they actually mobilize out there in the field. They went out and staked it, but they haven't started clearing. Am I correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes. Um, the twenty-twenty-two drainage improvements, all the pipe was purchased and delivered and is in, is stockpiled in the stockpile area. So the next step will be going in and getting a contract in place to install a lot of that pipe purchase. So we're meeting with administration to set that up. Um, projects that are still under development, Myrtle Springs improvements, that project is still under discussion with the MPO as far as what year funding it will fall under. And the basics on that project is, is a basic patch and overlay or restoration of the existing pavement on Myrtle Springs. Uh, Garfield Street Drainage Improvements, design is, design is actively pursuing on that project. Uh, we're getting close to developing an agency review set to submit to administration for review and direction on when they want to go out with it on that. Sanitary Sewer Equalization System, that project has had a revised platte that's been submitted to Entergy for review. And also the funding that was tied to that from the Louisiana Water Sector Commission was approved for an extension to where the plans and specifications have a new deadline of January third, twenty twenty-four. So depending on the types of projects, the Water Sector Commission approved the extensions. The longest one they ever approved was three months and this was one of them that they approved. And you had to demonstrate the complexity of the project to get that extension. So this one was approved. Um, the compressed natural gas station, that's awaiting funding. The Jones Street Water Plant, the ground storage tank, the second ground storage tank. That project has been approved by, by the Department of Health and Hospitals. Um, the Water Sector Commission will not authorize advertisement of the project till the city certifies that they will comply with the rate study. So that's basically the next step in the process is to certify moving forward with the rate study. That was tied to the funding from the Water Sector Commission. Ponderosa Parkway is a project that's going to be in the tip program. Uh, and it's under review right now with the MPO. And that's an extension from the current parkway up to Hudson. And that's it. Uh, there's a project that I failed to go over or didn't address with more detail. Be happy to answer any questions?
No questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Our next man, uh, here is, uh, Mr. Gray King.
Okay, on the clubhouse, we're in the process of, uh, dealing with the air-conditioned vent hood system in the kitchen. Determining, uh, uh, why it's not heat or cooling as well as it should be. We're in the process of finding that out. So, uh, other than that, everything seems to be okay. That I'm aware of.
No questions? No questions. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
If you'll make, the police station, uh, as of right now, we've taken care of that. I think Chris identified, he's happy. Uh, I'm, I'm compiling a letter right now stating what we did, uh, what Chris and him had done. And there's some items in there that, um, I think Star is the maintenance people. But anyway, we've got photographs that they need to go back in there and, and take care of and, uh...
Where's the warranty paying in at this?
The warranty?
Yes.
It's...
Getting done.
Uh, on the equipment, what they achieved, had to take care of that. That was over warranty. Uh, I took care of the insulation that was supposed to be inside the soffit. Uh, Star's gonna have to go, I think they've gone in there and punctured the, uh, the smoke wall in between, we have three thousand square feet, the fire marshal requires a smoke wall. Somebody's gone in there and busted a hole in, in that wall. And they've gone in there and punctured holes in, in the duct, which is, whoever did that shouldn't have done it. Anyway, I'm compiling a, a, uh, report. Getting that to y'all. So. But, uh, it's cooling the way it should be right now. But, uh, air connect, right now, there are so many holes in the air-conditioned duct, it's air-conditioned more than it addict than it should be. And I don't know why they did that.
You know, just to speak for them, they're not here, but I think they had a reason for it and, you know, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer that question that they were here.
Okay. Uh, Chief Willright.
Yeah, y'all have y'all's, uh, month of reporting from y'all. If you have any questions, uh, everything else is going pretty good. Halloween will be on the thirty-first from five thirty to eight.
Five thirty, eight. Uh, Chief, Doug's not here. I, they're assistant. I know that. I thought he, he is an assistant? No. Okay. Oh, you're right. Uh, Doug?
I don't really have anything. I'm just coming back from vacation.
I wouldn't be telling nobody about all that.
That's why I didn't tell you.
You still want me to get more? Mr. Bucket?
Uh, play at the golf club continues to be strong. Uh, it's sort of our second tournament season. Today we had the market basket tournament for a hundred twenty-eight players. On the twentieth, we have the Chamber of Commerce, which is... twenty-eighth, we have the Chamber of Commerce, which is a double shotgun, and it'll be two-hundred to two-hundred-twenty players. Uh, and then we moved the Westlake City Championship because of the weather back in August. It's now, uh, because we had a lot of small events on weekends, it's December second to fourth, because we didn't have any other times open that, uh, weren't competing with other tournaments in the area. Uh, we've, uh, had some irrigation on hole number six that we needed to do, relocating the main line as a result of the project that we had done over there. And, uh, that's been completed. And, uh, rounds for the last twelve months, as of September thirtieth, were forty-two thousand nine hundred and ten. And that's up about ten thousand over a year.
That sounds good.
That's it?
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do though, that's a tough job, I know. Uh, Mr. Milner?
Um, y'all have y'all's cash reporting, financial statements, and multiple financial statements so far. I'd be glad to answer your questions now. Anytime you have any of the futures, just give me a call.
No questions? We had financial committees, we talked about that, so, okay. Anything else?
Mayor from May, um, October thirtieth from four to seven PM at Ponderosa Park will be the Westlake Fall Festival. Um, instead of all the churches kinda doing their own trumper retreats, they all merge together along with the Rotary Club. The, the city's participating by adding some golf carts for, for traffic. And, uh, the Chamber of Commerce to put on one big event for the city. It's free for everybody. Um, so if you'd like to come out from four to seven on the Sunday, October thirtieth.
Uh, my hungry?
Yes, sir.
Need, need a motion and a second to approve reports and recommendations?
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Brown, all in favor? unanimous. Ryan?
Take the motion to Jerry.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Crower, all in favor? unanimous.